The City Council Regular Meeting is called to order and announced the core is present. First we'll have our invocation by Councilmember Deisha Hill.
Okay, may you please stand. Heavenly Father, thank you for today. Thank you for everyone that has come out tonight for our council meeting and that are on their way. Tonight, we ask you grant everyone humbleness to listen to each other so we can all make decisions for the betterment of our city. Our city mourns the pain and hurt that surrounds our city and impacts our residents. Give us comfort, peace, and sound minds to make good choices with empathy for our neighbors and calm minds for good judgment throughout the streets of Maynor. Bless the families of Maynor, the city staff, the businessmen, and the council that we may continue to strive to create a safe, stable community for us to live in now and for the future. In Jesus' name I pray. Thank you.
Amen. And now for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Non-agenda item, public comments, which is the white card. Comments will be taken from the audience on non-agenda related topics for a length of time not to exceed three minutes per person. The agenda item, public comments, on the yellow card. Comments will be taken from the audience on non-agenda and agenda items combined for a length of time not to exceed five minutes total per person on all items except for public hearings. Comments on public hearing items must be made when the item comes from the council and not to exceed two minutes per person. No action or discussion may be taken by the City Council during public comments on non-agenda items. To address the City Council, please complete the wider yellow card as presented to the City Secretary or designate prior to the meeting. First, we have our reports. Update on the Matter Plan Grants for Parks Recreation and Open Spaces for the Texas Public Parks and Wildlife.
Public comment.
Thank you, Lydia. Oh, yes. So I do want to address that we're going to pull Agenda Item Number 14. Ms. Fay Carter? Good evening, Ms. Carter.
Okay, I'm first.
You have three minutes, ma'am.
Okay, cut me off because I can get kind of long-winded on my subject, but I just want to thank the council members for what you do and I like the way you get attacked, but you still just smile and I like that. So my name is Fay Carter and I just really want to address unity in our country and I marched under Dr. King. I hope this is appropriate for this, but I marched under Dr. King and I helped to get University of Texas integrated and so I was very proud of what we had done and I liked what he said. It's not the color of your skin, but the content of your heart. So I've been just really proud about being an American citizen and I noticed things have been kind of going wild and my great-grandbaby, who was five years old a few years ago, told me, "Gee Ma, I hate white people." And I was just like, I thought we had done so much good stuff and everything was working out really well and that just broke my heart. And then I started noticing and paying attention and I'm just really wanting to get us as American citizens to be united. I think God gave us that name instead of Australia, Africa, France. He gave us the United States and so I really wish that we would just check our hearts and really know that we're just all American citizens and a country divided will fall. Great empires have fallen and I think we're the greatest empire now and we're the leader of the free world and we're just leaders and I think God needs us to lead. So that's just what I want to talk about and encourage everybody to. We're all American citizens and we all want to be united and we're all different, but we can still be united. We can still be Americans. Okay, I love everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Tracy Johnson. Hello, Mr. Johnson. You have three minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Tracy Johnson. I'm a resident of the Shadow Glen neighborhood. Been there since 2003 and the Agenda Item 14 was pulled and I was kind of wanting to speak on the waste disposal and the situation where our neighborhood has been dumped on as far as a lot of trash and things of that nature and not being picked up. Like I said, since 2003, I've just noticed a lot of sofas and things that have been on the roadside and it's giving a kind of a black eye to the neighborhood and I know that the prior contract, we had bulk pickup in the neighborhood and we've gone through several contracts and that piece has been pulled out and, you know, most folks that really don't respect the neighborhood have been dumping trash, sofas, things of that nature. So when this returns back to Agenda Item, I would like to make sure that any contract that you're considering, that we do have adequate scheduled bulk pickup to kind of alleviate some of these issues that I'm seeing kind of develop as the neighborhood grows. Otherwise, that's basically why I'm speaking to you today. Like I said, the Agenda Item was pulled, but that's one of the things I'm really concerned with, that that's a lot of unnecessary garbage being dumped from the outside and from the neighborhood where we don't have the services provided to us. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I would like to yield my remaining time. Sorry. I would like to yield my remaining time to Mr. Roberts.
I'm sorry, it has to be on the card or on a new card. Mr. Battle? Mr. Battle? Mr. Battle, you have five minutes, sir.
Is the Austin Bachi League going to be allowed to speak today?
Sir?
Is the Austin Bachi League going to be allowed to speak today?
No, you're allowed to speak. You're on the card.
Okay, now, we talk about discrimination, but not a lot of people do anything about it. I'm doing stuff about it. I've got two lawsuits about discrimination. They wouldn't let me have a booth at Juneteenth for the Austin Bachi League. That's discrimination. Okay. So for not doing that, I'm going to ask for another $1,000 from the judge. It's $7,000. And here's an interesting question. Where's the attorney? You're going to talk about two lawsuits in executive session and the attorney's not even here. Oh, there she is. I'm sorry. My apologies. Welcome. Okay, I was at our art park. This is the road crap that is being dumped in our park. That's a park for our kids. This is toxic waste. This is asphalt. You call, you're okay with this and Mr. Woodard's here, the Public Works guy, you've known about this for four days and I appreciate them for moving close to the railroad track thanks to me. You didn't do anything. But you, Mr. Moore, you called this a public health hazard. This is a marker for the end zone at the Bachi Courts. He called this a public health hazard so that they could breach their contract. That lawsuit's coming up too. But this is okay? But this is a public health hazard? Get real. Cuatro personas pueden salvar nuestra ciudad. Todos los parques están vacíos. ¿Por qué? Tenemos que luchar con palabras y amor. Are you guys ever going to be able to translate anything into Spanish? Ever? You're the Hispanic guy. Can't you do that? Seriously, 50% of our people speak Spanish and they can't even put Agenda Item in Spanish. Okay, we're going to have the Parks guy come up in a minute. I wonder if he got the north arrow pointing in the right direction this time? Has he got the name of the park spelled correct? Is there anything in it? Can he pronounce it right? Last time, he pronounced it Tiananmen. Tiananmen Park is in China. You guys are on the Parks Committee. How did you let that slip through? We pay you guys now. Do you know we pay the mayor $3,500 a month? Do you think he's taking less hours at the city, at the school district? Dude, I never thought of that. I don't see much improvement. We're paying you guys. I don't see much improvement. Do I think you read these 19 pages of stuff on these contracts? No. Okay, one thing, this cracks me up. You have the minutes in there as an Agenda Item. Where's the minutes? Where are they? How can we look at them? I guess you don't want the people to know what happened at the last meeting. That's the way it reads to me. Okay? Another thing is ridiculous. Consent, Agenda Items, all the department reports. That's what people want to talk about. Okay, another thing, this cracks me up. You guys are paying $5,000 for the plaque on the memorial wall? Why didn't you do that when you built it? I'll tell you why. The leadership thing was inept. You didn't even have a budget. You didn't even have a permit. That's all the stuff you got mad at the Bachi Courts about and you did exactly the same thing. Now, Robert Battle, if I was putting $5,000 into vets, I'd put $3,000 into the actual vets and $2,000 in a little plaque for you guys, but you guys want to spend $5,000 on the plaque and nothing on the vets. You see a difference there? Okay, we've got an election coming up. Now, I don't even know what this 4.2194 acres is. Is that Maynor Downs? Is that what we're talking about there? I want to call it Willie Nelson, Maynor Downs. Okay? So I guess I'll get some time. Now, let me mention this. When the public hearings come up, part of the idea is the public gets to hear an answer. Okay? So we're going to talk during the public hearing. It's not, we listen to you. It's not so the public gets to hear. It's so you hear from the public and the public hears some answers. That's what a public hearing is. Okay? So don't get mad when I stay here and try to get an answer. And meanwhile, I told Texas Materials I'm not going to sue them because they moved all their vehicles out of the park there. But unless that cleanup gets started within a few days, that's my third lawsuit. And after that, I'm going to do one about the cemetery and then I'm going to do one about the homestead and then I'm going to do one about the colored school to Travis County. Now, on the grave sites that you want to put 95 townhomes on top of black graves, I may also sue the Texas--
Time's up. Thank you, Mr. Battle.
May also sue the Texas Historical Committee.
Next, we're going into the reports. Update on the Master Plan Grant for Parks Recreation and Open Spaces to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. Mr. Gander.
Thank you very much, Council. This is not my happiest job. I am reporting here tonight as to-- thank you. Oh, there, there. Good, thank you. Thank you, sir. As to why we are not going forward with the park application for Timmerman Park. Did I say that correctly?
Timmerman.
Thank you. Timmerman Park. When we were engaged on the 5th of May to work on this project, we treated it the way we treat every other project that we've done in our 40 years. We start with an environmental assessment. Am I loud enough now? Thank you, ma'am. The first thing we do is look for water and pollution. And when we did the floodplain analysis, you can see there is the park. The blue is the floodplain and the yellow is the only parts that can be built upon and they are generally built. Down at the bottom of the screen, we, once we found that, we then went back upstream to figure out what was the cause of the water and what quality of water it was. When we went up, we found that somewhere in the vicinity of 2002 to 2004, when the land was donated, a revision or a redirection of these creeks was put in and there was no creek stabilization put in with it. If you look at the next-- I think it would be-- could I move and speak loudly and point? Oh, here we go. If you will, if you-- can we hear me? If you can see the gray line here and the gray line here, those were the-- that was the root of-- that was the root of the original park, of the original creek. When they were adjusted, that's the blue, and now as opposed to going past the park on both sides, they meet at the bottom, which is always wet. So that's two problems. A third problem is because the Army Corps of Engineers was applied to for this creek remediation, the creek is now under the auspices or the control of the Army Corps of Engineers. And if you propose to do work near or on floodplain, Army Corps of Engineers, you have to go through several layers of study. The next-- the next-- boy, I'm not good at this. I'm sorry. The next slide-- which you cannot read and I'm sorry for the size. I should have made them bigger-- is the cost estimate. It's not just the cost estimate to approach Corps of Engineers, it's the time. I'd like to go through these. By the way, my information comes from Futurelink Technologies. That is an environmental firm that has been in business for 35 years and I've worked with them for 30 of them. I don't work with them. They are the firm that we use for our environmental assessments. We would have to finalize-- we would have to develop a clear example of a cross-section or two of the impact to the water. Hire a firm to conduct a wetland determination system. $5,000, two to three weeks. A preliminary jurisdictional determination, $4,000, an additional two weeks. A jurisdictional determination would require the application being sent to USACE for their refire. That takes 45 days. That means they would need to see the plans and the specifications complete that we were proposing to put down on the ground. And if they said no, those plans would now be useless to a lot of money. Total, two, three months. To determine the best method for improvement, the site would mean the least impact, either avoidance and/or no activities below the ordinary high-water mark. If this is possible, in this scenario, it would likely be a submission to USACE. They-- my-- the assumption was it would be $25,000 for that work. I think Maynor is as deserving a city as I have ever worked with to have a park. You don't have a good park. And I'm sorry that this one is not something that you could really develop into a park that would work. When I showed you where the items were already built on the higher ground-- they are already-- well, they're obviously already there, but anything that we put in that duplicates something does not score. So things like sidewalks, restrooms, lighting, you've already got all of that there. I believe you can have a wonderful park if you have a better piece of property, but I cannot see that we can get government funding to come into Timmerman. We can use your own funding and you will deal with Corps of Engineers, but if you're not using government money, it's an awful lot simpler thing. I hope to continue working with you on this. I am sorry it has not-- it has turned out the way that it is, but this is what it is. The water is where it is and I would end my presentation by saying I really suggest that you should do some soil testing where those two creeks form together to see what kind of materials you have there. I'll answer any questions anyone has.
Council, you have any questions? Any comments?
Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you.
Hold on, hold on. I'm sorry, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I do have a question. What-- listening to what you were saying and then I guess the final thoughts of it, what do you consider-- or how do you label it? How do you name it of the reason why we probably would not get government funding to revitalize or to do something to this park? Like, because if we try to pursue it outside of-- with personal city funds, we don't want to be able to run into the same barriers and were there any other suggestions? Like you said, some of the things that could be used are already in the park. Were there any other suggestions that could be used in order to create a master plan for it? Or is it just like-- I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. My hearing is a little bit on the short end side. If I understand, you were saying that can you do things in Timmerman Park without using grant money? If you do, the regulations for USACE are-- United-- U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, USACE, are significantly less. Whatever agency that you go to for a park would have their own set of requirements about how you had to coordinate with floodplain and USACE. You're free when you're using your own money. It's an awful lot easier, but it's an awful lot better for the park, for the city, I think, to use donated land and take the value of the land and use that as your match. If you want to put in more and overmatch, that's even better. There's no reason-- I can see that a good application from Maynor would not go. It's just not going to happen there.
Thank you.
Now, what I'm understanding is that if we were to go ahead and spend the money and go through the Army Corps of Engineers to clear the land or see where we could build or what we can build on that land--
Yes, ma'am.
Then, once they clear it, we can do what we need to do, but we have to go through that process first.
Yes, ma'am. And it's a step process that goes through. As I say, you can spend all the money and get there and they can say no, but if they say yes, then you can use it, but you will still be limited to things that are either doing massive work to stabilize out there. You couldn't put anything big in that floodplain. It's great for a dog park. It's great for bird watching. It's great for low-impact, but not for the recreational equipment that would score well enough to get you a grant.
Okay, so basically, in order to get the grant funding, we need like major stuff put there or plan to be put there and we cannot do that with the amount of floodplain that we have.
What you do with your own funding, I have nothing to say about. You'll have-- you, if you want, you can deal with USACE on that. I was dealing with them bringing a park project to them. I wasn't coming to them saying, "What can the city do?" I was trying to get information on what's the restrictions and it took weeks even to get the number of the permit. I've committed-- I've communicated with Mr. Dunlap to see if he could find anything about it and he says he has not found anything.
Okay, so basically, if we go through USACE and we take this timeframe to do this--
Yes, ma'am.
Is that put us-- if we get a yes from them, does that put us in line with applying for next year's grant?
It would. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm just saying all of this for clarity--
No.
--for everyone to understand exactly what we're talking about and how much the city would have to put out to be able to use that land as the park that it was donated as.
Yes, ma'am. The only restrictions you would have would be what size-- for instance, how much concrete you would be putting on solid land, semi-solid land, semi-watered land. There's going to be a lot of soil work to determine exactly where you can do what based on the size and weight of it and its impact. But if your question is, if you clear it, if you go through, yes, you could use this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more comments? Questions? Thank you, Mr. Gander.
As I say, this is not my happiest evening and I hope to visit with you again soon. Good night.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, Mr. Gander?
No, no, he's okay.
Okay.
No, Council, just so you know that the things that we've talked about in some of our ordinances, the land donation, one of the things we've talked about is when land is donated to the city, is that we don't put ourselves in a situation like this because I think that's part of when things are donated, we find ourselves, like in this case, now we have to go through all these extra steps. And normally when you have developers that donate their land to the city or to our organization, you find yourself in a situation without doing environmental. I think that's one of the things we're doing now when we go to buy land, is to secure the-- all those-- get all those boxes checked. And so in this case, there is some land that could be developed on and built upon, but as far as doing something massive, like we'd like to have a central park, the land is not suited for a central park because of all the things that, as we've seen on the map, to show that there's going to be a lot of restrictions. And in order for us to know what we can do with that land, we'd have to go through some extra steps. So if we decide to do something in the future, having that checked off and then having that on file will allow us to move forward if resources are going to be placed in something close or near that area. But the other areas that are developed on, we can still identify things that the community is asking for and we can still put forward a project from the committee to the council through the process to say we have funds set aside to do certain things. But just knowing that area that's identified as the waterway to the Corps of Engineers, it's really off limits for us to even want to entertain anything without getting a clear answer. So it doesn't make sense for us to-- like I said-- go through a process to try to get a grant because there's another federal agency that has a checklist of things that have to be cleared. And so again, for us in the ordinances that we have in place for land donation, it's real critical that we ask where is the land at? How building is it going to be for a community asset in the future? So thank you for putting those in place for land donations. We'll just make sure we don't find ourselves in a position when people want to donate something to us, is just we ask the questions and how it's going to impact us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Now we'll go into public hearings. Number one, conduct the public hearing on an ordinance rezoning the Monarch Ranch subdivision being 134.53 acres, more or less, and located at the southwest corner of the intersection at Greg Lane and FM 973, Maynor, Texas, from planned unit development to planned unit development. Mr. Battle? You have two minutes, sir. You have two minutes.
Since this-- my name's Robert Bataille. May I have the wireless mic in a second? I'd like to see the close-up of the site map. That was the most embarrassing 15 minutes I've seen. You guys wasted $12,500 to find out that the creek at Timmerman Park is in the floodplain. You guys hear that? I had a disc golf course ready to put in there three years ago for free. I had a disc golf course ready to put in there three years ago for free. I'm talking about parks. Pardon me?
We're public hearings.
No kidding. I'm talking about the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that you're trying to steal from us from Monarch Ranch. The lawyer is here, you can ask her point blank. This all came out about a year and a half ago. Open space does not equal the one word parkland. Okay? May I see the close up please and have the wireless mic? Sir? Can I see the close up of the parkland?
Mr. Battel, please express respect for, for not just, not just here, but your time is still running.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Please, continue.
Can I see the layout of the thing they call twenty acres of parkland? Pardon me? This is an embarrassment. They did this, see, every time they come back, it gets more and more vague. On the left, they have a skinny little shrimp of nothing that they call parkland. And then they have a water retention prong and they put that together, they think they, they get out of paying two hundred and twenty thousand because those are parks? No, they're not parks. And you guys should know that by now. This is why the two people that are on our parks committee are not going to be there next year. I guarantee you that. You don't even know what parkland versus parkland is. Open space is also not the name of the Woodlands Park. Shadow Glen Open Space is not the name of that. So let's go through this again.
Talk this up, Mr. Battel.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem Counsel, I'd like to make a motion that we close public hearing, item number one.
Motion made by Councilmember Wallace, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rama Sua. Oh. Councilmember Weir, my apologies. Okay, are there any questions to the motion? Any questions? No questions, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing number two, conduct a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning one lot on 0.31 acres more or less and being located near the intersection of Greg Maynard Road and West Eggleston Street, Maynard, Texas, from light commercial to multifamily twenty-five. Mr. Battel, two minutes, sir.
Thank you, my name's Robert Battel. I wanted to get an answer from the lawyer or somebody that actually knows as to whether open space equals parkland. Now here we have another problem with words, Maynard, the city where words have no meaning. This is in a historic district since 2017. It runs from the railroad track to 290, from the creek to Shining Creek. This has no business being here at all, period, end of story. We need to put a moratorium on this, this should be Priscilla Manor's pasture. The homestead is right there next to it. That's our Alamo, we need to protect it. Do you understand that? That's James Maynard's homestead from 1850 and you want to put four hundred apartments across the street? Would you do the Alamo without a parking lot? That's what you're doing. Now let me ask, relative to this, you guys don't even know what history is. James Maynard's not even on the website, Maynard History page. You go to Maynard History, James Maynard's not even on there. Me and Wayne Schneider rediscovered his homestead and you guys couldn't even care less. Eggleston Street here was the Stagecoach Route. We supposedly have a history and tourism person, what a joke she's turned out to be. She has not done one thing in eight months for history or tourism. She's good at renting a lot of beanbag chairs and getting a lip sync artist. So this needs to be disapproved. And unfortunately, I should get to speak again when it comes up at the agenda. But since the mayor basically stole two thirds of everybody's speaking time in violation of the Open Meetings Act, Austin just got busted for that in court, that got thrown out, they're, they're countersuing. But you guys have no business letting us not speak when the item comes up. You guys won't remember what I said twenty minutes from now. Then Mr. Smoothie's going to get out here. Anyway, it should never be allowed there, that should be a historic site. It should be protected and I'm going to sue the Texas Historic Commission unless they realize that too.
Thank you, Mr. Battel. Do I have a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem Counsel, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on item number two.
Motion made by Councilmember Wallace, do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Weir. Are there any questions to the motion? No questions? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda, all of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by the mayor or council member, in which event the items will be removed from the consent agenda considered separately. Number three, consideration, discussion and possible action to approve the city council minutes of July 3rd, 2024, regular meeting. Four, consideration, discussion and possible action on accepting the June 2024 city council monthly reports. Number five, consideration, discussion and possible action on accepting the June 2024 departmental reports. Number six, consideration, discussion and possible action on wastewater utility easement for the Oprah Development. Number seven, consideration, discussion and possible action for the purposes of acquiring a water utility easement for the Waterline FM 973 project. Number eight, consideration, discussion and possible action on a possession and use agreement for utility easement purposes for the Waterline FM 973 project. Is there a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem Counsel, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion, motion made by Councilmember Moreno, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wallace. Any questions to the motion? There being none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Now we go right into the regular agenda. Number nine, first reading, consideration, discussion and possible action on an ordinance rezoning the Monarch Ranch subdivision being 134.53 acres more or less and located at the southwest corner of the intersection at Greg Lane and FM 973, Maynard, Texas, for planned unit development to planned unit development.
Good evening, am I too loud, am I loud enough? My name is Michael Burrell, I am a planner with the City of Maynard, speaking on behalf of Scott Dunlap tonight. Uh, let's get right into it. So this PUD amendment is a second amendment to the PUD and all it does is reduce the minimum dwelling unit size from seventeen hundred square feet to thirteen hundred square feet. Now that won't be the entire development is thirteen hundred square foot dwelling units. It'll be incremental. Whereas originally, it's supposed to be twenty percent, thirteen hundred to fourteen hundred, twenty percent, one thousand four hundred one to fifteen hundred, so on and so forth, all the way up until you get to seventeen hundred. Then from seventeen, one thousand seven hundred and one square feet and up, it's unlimited. However, after discussion from the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was agreed to that the stipulation be changed from twenty percent for the thirteen hundred square foot to fourteen hundred square foot and one thousand four hundred and one square foot to fifteen hundred square foot be reduced from twenty percent to fifteen percent as there was concern regarding the concept of affordability with smaller dwelling unit sizes, even though the market ultimately influences what the price of these homes will be. So the fifteen percent was reached just to make sure that they're still adequate sized housing while maintaining the diversity in size of housing for different people who had different price points or different things they're looking for in their homes.
Thank you, do I have a motion? Do you have a motion for agenda number nine?
Mayor Pro Tem Counsel, I'd like to make a motion that city council approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning the Monarch Ranch subdivision being one hundred and thirty-four point fifty-three acres more or less and located at the southwest corner of the intersection at Greg Lane and FM 973, Maynard, Texas, from planned unit development to planned unit development with modifications.
Motion made by Councilmember Moreno, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rama Sua. Are there any questions to the motion?
I have a question. Um, the other pieces in here that are in red, is that the other modifications that were made from PUD to PUD? Is that part of the difference as well as the square footage?
The masonry requirements, if I'm not mistaken.
The masonry requirements, sorry.
That is a part of the DA, a third amendment, which is separate from the actual PUD amendment. And it is based on a section of code that already exists previously, based on pure SF2 zoning. If you want to reduce the size of the dwelling unit, you essentially add ten percent more masonry up to, I believe, fifty percent. So to enhance that with each drop of a hundred square foot in dwelling unit size, there's a ten percent increase in masonry. So for example, the one thousand seven hundred and one square foot and up has a thirty percent requirement. Then when you get to sixteen hundred and so forth, then it's a forty percent, fifteen to sixteen, fifty percent, all the way down to one thousand three hundred square feet, which is a seventy percent masonry requirement. And that stipulation is that the masonry has to face basically where the public can see and access it. So if you're on a corner lot, it'll be the side. If the public right of ways in front of your home, it'll be there. If you have a rear loaded home, then your masonry requirement has to be in the rear.
Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members, Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney, just wanted to give you some additional information. The development agreement was provided to, to everyone, uh, in here so that y'all have, you don't see it for the first time when it actually comes as an action item. So there is redlining there because we wanted to show what changes, um, the city staff had made versus what the developer had asked for. So that's why there's redlining there, but it will come back to you in a clean version. However, um, based on what was, the back, um, the information that y'all have asked us to do is provide you a little bit more time on the DAs and, um, give you those drafts ahead of time and then provide you with the action items.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I have one more question and it may be something that was already, um, established. Was there, was it the decision of the developer or the decision of, along with planning and zoning, I guess the PUD committee to, um, to have our dwelling size start at thirteen hundred now where our standard was like fifteen hundred as the minimum?
So to my understanding, the reduction in dwelling size request came from the developer because initially they thought they were meeting the requirement of SF2 at seventeen hundred square feet because they were including the garage in that calculation. However, dwelling unit size is only considering condition space, so heating, AC, things along those lines. The garage is not included. So the request to reduce the minimum dwelling size to thirteen hundred square feet is so that they can maintain a portion of their original design where the garage makes up that extra four hundred, even though it's not actually counted in dwelling unit space. So the request comes from the developer.
Any more questions?
I just have a question, so is the seventeen oh one square feet, when it says unlimited, is, what, what percent realistically can we expect that to be?
I have no idea. That would be more of a developer, uh, developer question. The PUD is approved for four hundred homes. So if you go at that twenty percent interval, that's about eighty homes per interval. So eighty thirteen hundred square foot homes to fourteen hundred, eighty fourteen hundred to fifteen hundred, so on and so forth. Now that doesn't mean they will go with that percentage, but that's essentially what those numbers detail.
Thank you.
And I believe the developer is here if they would like to speak or if you have any questions for them.
Any other questions? Is the develop, is the developer here?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a quick question, that, how, I'm just concerned about the growing, enough room for growing families in this space.
Absolutely. Our preference would be that all the homes would be well over seventeen hundred feet, but we wanted to have a diverse, uh, price points for a variety of different, uh, buyers' needs. Again, the, the intent is to, to provide, you know, a three bedroom, two bath house that would range from thirteen hundred to, to up to twenty-eight hundred feet. Uh, is kind of what the, right now our lot sizes that are approved through the PUD are fifties and sixties. The, the, per the PUD, we were allowed twenty percent, um, excuse me, uh, we were allowed, uh, up to eighty percent fifty foot lots and twenty percent sixty foot lights, lots. We're actually over that, we're, we're twenty-four point eight percent sixty foot lots and then the balance are the fifty foot lots. So the, the lot sizes will support either. But the larger lots will, will tend to, to support a larger home better.
Alright, thank you.
But, but again, the intent was to give just a wider variety of price points for people to come in, whether it's first time home buyers with, with young children, whether it's people that are, um, you know, approaching retirement age, they're wanting to downsize just so that there's a better variety and, and a variety of price points.
Thank you for that explanation, I appreciate that.
Sir, I'm sorry, could you just say your name?
I'm sorry, my name's Rick Hanna and I'm with the Blackburn Group.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Going once? Okay, there are no questions? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, five to one. Number ten, first reading, consideration, discussion and possible action on an ordinance rezoning one lot on 0.31 acres more or less and being located near the intersection of Greg Maynard Road and West Eggleston Street, Maynard, Texas, from light commercial to multifamily twenty-five.
Good evening again, I am Michael Burrell with the City of Maynard, I am a city planner. So this item is pretty straightforward. This is not working currently, so I'll just speak with you. Uh, so the section of land that's being rezoned was essentially a part of the portion that's not being rezoned and it was intended to be shared parking between the commercial tenant and the multifamily tenant below it. The commercial tenant that's coming in realizes they didn't need that much space. So essentially the multifamily is going to now just take that portion of land and use it for their parking instead of it being a shared parking between the two spaces.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem Counsel, I'd like to make a motion that city council approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning one lot on 0.31 acres more or less and being located near the intersection of Greg Maynard Road and West Eggleston Street, Maynard, Texas, from C1 light commercial to multifamily twenty-five.
Motion made by Councilmember Moreno, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rama Sua. Are there any questions to the motion? Any questions? If there are none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Number eleven, consideration, discussion and possible action on an amended and restated interlocal agreement for the Austin Regional Intelligence Center.
Mayor Pro Tem Counsel, good evening. Uh, so the Austin Police Department and the ARIC, uh, also known as Austin Regional Intelligence Center, came to us and all the participating agencies and the intelligence center to revise the interlocal agreement. This doesn't affect our cost or, or any of the work that we do with them. All this change in the interlocal does is give the ability for ARIC to approve new member cities or agencies without having to go to Austin City Council and then causing a chain reaction for all of the entities to come back to their city councils. Uh, and so that's all this amendment does.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem Counsel, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amended and restated interlocal agreement for the Austin Regional Intelligence Center. For the Austin Regional Intelligence Center uh and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Motion made by Councilmember Moreno. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Weir. Are there any questions to the motion? Any questions? There are none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Number twelve, consideration discussion and possible action on allocating funds for the Veterans Wall Dedication Plaque.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. The Veterans Wall project at Jane Lane Park was completed in November twenty two, I'm sorry, November twenty twenty two. And the city staff and then Parks Committee met and we started discussing the next steps for the Veterans Wall. Uh staff would like to to place a dedication plaque by the Veterans Wall to thank the leadership manner class of twenty twenty two. Community sponsors, city council and city manager and city departments for their support and contribution. Staff would like to purchase the plaque to be placed before the November twenty twenty four veteran ceremony.
Do I have a motion?
I hope I'm pushing. I really am pushing. The mayor council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of the Veterans Wall Dedication Plaque and allot funds. From the. Where would the funds come from?
We're actually gonna, the Parks Department will have the funds for that.
All the park with the Parks Department in the amount not to exceed six thousand dollars.
Motion made by Councilmember Weir. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Ramosqua. Are there any questions to this motion? Any questions? If none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Number thirteen, consideration discussion and possible action on allocating resources and funds to the back to school haircut drive by the Lab Barber Shop. Mister Franks?
Good evening. My name is Jayrod Franks and I'm the owner of the Lab Barber Shop right here downtown Maynor. And uh every year I host the back to school haircut drive for all the kids to donate free haircuts. Uh just to give back. Uh this is something that I've been doing as long as I've been cutting hair and I want to bring it to the community as well. Uh previous years, we've grown uh from cutting over thirty kids to forty kids to fifty. And this year I'm expecting over seventy kids, so I was asking for some of y'all's assistance with this event. Um it's getting so big to where it's hard for me to, you know, fund it all myself. So uh my first was request was to block off the streets. Um I think it's Voice and Parsons Street. Uh cause we're having a lot of kids cross the street. There's gonna be a lot of traffic and there's a lot of cars that drive there pretty fast. So we're just looking out for their safety. Um if I can get some assistance with some tents, tables and chairs for people that are out there. I was gonna provide a bouncy house and uh games for people that are waiting uh for their haircut. Uh we're also gonna provide free food uh for the community. Uh I just recently got my food handler's permit. So I can cook. I was wanting to do like hamburgers or hot dogs and chips, something for the kids. Also talked to uh the fire chief and they're willing to come out and bring the fire truck out for the kids to help out with the event. Um I have a snow cone vendor as well. Uh we can give you all their information, whatever you need. And let's see. I also have a flyer made. I can email it to y'all to see if y'all can approve of the flyer so we can start marketing this as soon as possible. And um I've talked to, I'm trying to talk to the manager at Walmart to see if they'll be willing to donate backpacks for the cause. And also partnered with Myra uh Guillaume with the Maynor Independent School District. They're doing the the backpacking school supplies August the tenth, which is a Saturday. And I was gonna give gift certificates for haircuts to that as well. And then my event will be August the eleventh from ten to four. And then this. That's about it. I will have a DJ out, so uh it's gonna be a very eventful. Uh event occasion. And so I'm just looking for y'all's support in that area. And also, I wanted to say that I am part of the Maynor Heritage Society. I've been deputized by Ms. Bisco to be a part of the Maynor Heritage Society. And that's it as far as my agenda.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion for item number thirteen?
Um Mister Moore. All the city would be responsible for is providing these specific items on this list.
The question. Talked about tents, we talked about tables. I've reached out to one of the Lions Club members. And so there would be some tables and chairs available through the Lions Club. The city doesn't necessarily have. Tables and chairs that we use outside of the city facilities. So we did make contact with the Lions Club, so. There is interest from them to be able to provide uh the number of tables and 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 chairs. And the city does have four pop up ten by ten tents that we could, in this case, allow to be utilized for the event. And one of the things we we were talking about with the restaurant next to you, Las Las Solas Salsas. Is that they usually have a traffic on Sunday. And the one thing we we just try to make sure we. Are in agreement is to talk to them and say, look at their traffic on a Sunday to see if we can not close the street all the way up at. Voice and Burning, but close it there at the alley. If you close it at the alley, then we can have tents set up on both sides without. Impacting their parking. It may not be a problem. We just didn't want the church crowd to come in and encounter where they parked. So just that that east side of their their building is probably got a little traffic on Sunday from eleven to two. But just wanna make sure we didn't completely close the street without you talking to them. But just while we figure if you can do it to the alley, they allow you to have. Burning and Parsons closed, so people can't turn in there, but also have it to where they can get to the alley so people that need to drive around. Wouldn't necessarily drive up on the event itself.
Okay, yeah, no, that's that's totally fine. And also I talked to Blue Bonnet and they offered to donate the industrial cooling fans as well.
So yeah, we can, we we've reached out to the company that we rent the big tents from. And they don't donate, so we figured we had to pour smaller tents that may allow you to be able to set up tables and chairs underneath that. If you if you position them on the street in between the barricades.
Okay, you said four? Four tents?
Four ten by ten tents.
Sorry, Council. Yolanda Valderrama. Um in addition to that, that would be also waiving all the city events, special events fees. For closure of the roads, barricades, staffing, um police. That will is part of our ornaments when we do events like these ones. Uh so that is something that you guys will have to add to your motion, whatever decision you decide to go with.
And how much in dollars and cents would that equal to?
Um it depends on the hours. I know our, we need to get with police department to see what their fees and the that. The calculations. And then for our area in the events, uh our barricade rental is. From fifty to a hundred dollars. Uh depends how many we need. And then staff, if I'm not mistaken, is twenty dollar per. Per per hour uh per every two hours. And it has to be at least two staff there. That's for public work. Um but I can confirm all of that numbers for you.
And in this case, you know, if it had been a first request for blocking the street, if barricades set up, I think we'd be good to manage to sit there. This one thing, if we were doing something physically with Mister Jayrod, then maybe one thing, but we can definitely make sure. Like any times when we had streets paved, we had barricades up, people driving around it, but without people in the street. We would make sure it'd be properly marked so people don't drive up on the event. And and staff with police presence because if police is aware, it's usually on their on their routine to monitor the area. There's a lot of traffic, so we make sure police has some uh physical presence that have been stationed there.
Mister Franks, have you reached out to the neighbors right there?
Uh the other businesses?
The the actual homeowners. Not the business, but the homeowners. There's a house right there, you know, kind of.
I do, I um I actually know the owner, Mister Jimmy. Uh I could talk to him about the whole event. He's he's always been very helpful. With anything that I I do for the city, so I'm pretty sure he wouldn't have a problem. But again, I could talk to him.
Okay, thank you.
I think having that verified. And and letting Yolanda know so that maybe not, we just don't want any calls or something come up the day of the event that I didn't know about it. Even you know, cause some people don't see the flyers on social media, so we just wanna make sure whatever the council's asking, that piece with the neighbors resolved. Even with the with the restaurant, just to make sure, uh cause there may have some parents that may wanna go and buy something from the restaurant, but just to make sure you. Yeah, we are all our bases covered, uh if you have an uh event next to your neighbors and next to the business.
Could we have a total of the fees? Can we have a traffic control plan? You know, and have this come back to us so that way we can see that?
Um if it comes back to us, it would come back to us like right near the event. Because this is our last meeting for the month, so it would have to come back the first meeting of next month. And that's August seventh and the event is the eleventh, so he won't even be able to advertise the event. If we don't make a decision.
I think police, if there if there's a traffic, traffic plan, I think this is like the street closures would be asked for. Long as we know, let the community know in advance and the neighbors close by. The biggest thing is make sure. Anybody's driving, getting lost since the barricades, hopefully the barricades will be afforded an end to where they don't drive up on the event. They can have a chance to. Make a little swoop around and drive them up. But as far as being able to be actually barricaded. We make sure no car can drive through once it's set up, cause I think that's gonna be the biggest concern. It's like you have an event, it's not properly marked, but we can also have. Street closed ahead once they turn, that way nobody can drive up and say, you know, it's gonna be closed. Cause you know, we do have a lot of people that travel through their weekends and with that being like a route not every week. Just different things that people do on weekends that we don't think about, but I think having it properly. Signed and and marked will allow people not to, cause the police can do a a plan, but they just wanna make sure. Public records has the barricades in place to to not have people feel, you know, hey, this will create pedestrian vehicle incident.
In a in addition, uh for special events, when our our closure roads and blocks. Uh he needs to make announcement within uh five business days to our community, so at least a week prior. There must be announcements regarding the event, any closures. Uh roads or any disturbance that may cause in a day to day of our of our community. Just for your consideration.
Yolanda, just just um estimate, not counting uh staff. But just the fee, event fees alone. Roundabout how much you think that would be?
Um between four to five hundred dollars if I have to estimate. Um all our events for more than eight hours is. If I'm not mistaken, a hundred to a hundred and fifty, and then we have to charge debris, uh the uh. Deposit and then any other like equipment, like barricades, something like that, so. Between four to five hundred dollars, it would be a pretty good estimate. Uh and that's without the staffing.
I know this question's probably gonna sound weird. But is this something that you would expect on an annual basis? Or are we just specifically, you're more wanting to try this this year?
Well, yeah, like I stated before, um the previous years that I've done, it's been a a success by me doing it on my own strength. And uh it's been growing exponentially every year. This year I feel like it's gonna get to a number where I can't really. Do it all. I can't fund it all by myself, so I was looking for some assistance from the city and this is an annual event that I host. So I'm gonna do it regardless, whether I get the assistance or not, but I was hoping I can come to the city. And uh get some assistance since this is for the community and it's gonna, you know, definitely make y'all look good.
Well, we just wanna help as many people as we can.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
I like the idea. Um I've made it this cool block thing. Um I'm not sure exactly if I'm imagining correctly which streets that would be blocked off. Where the barricades would go, but and I'm only saying that because my question would be. To make it safe, like uh what the city manager was saying, keeping it safe, but where would the. Where would the people who were coming, where would they be able to park? Is there adequate a parking that would be available? Um so that they can, they don't, you don't have to move barricades in order to get them like in the space where they're gonna be and then. And so I didn't know if that was, if that was already stated or something, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um so if we do uh bring the barricades in, like Mister Moore was talking about. Where the alley is, it does leave uh some parking. Uh we don't wanna intervene with with Los Salsas has going on as well. As far as parking, you got parking on Parsons in front of Ramos. You got parking in front of the gas station, maybe on the side. Of our building and there may be just some drop offs because what we're gonna have is a call list. So whenever somebody comes up or they're ten minutes, you know, uh before getting a haircut, we can call, they can drop the kid off. And then the parents can go on about their business.
Do you happen to know if Los Blue Horses closed on Sundays?
It's gonna be from ten to four. I imagine that they open up a little bit later in the evening around maybe three. I can get some clarification on that, though.
Okay, because there would be parking available on that side of the street as well.
Have you thought about or talked about like future sponsors or partners? Cause I know like we have other barber shops and and hair salons here, so my thing is if we, you know, do it for you. And then they see that we're, you know, working with you, then they're gonna wanna do one and then we're gonna have to close more streets and, you know, have more city staff. Having to work events.
Well, to be honest with you, um it is not about me or the lab. It's just about the community and the kids. So me personally, I don't feel like there'll be a need to do it for other barber shop. We can collaborate with other shops and maybe get a bigger facility. To host more barbers, to take care of more kids, if it ever came down to that.
Can I get a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem Council. I make a motion that we direct city staff to provide support to. The back to school haircut drive approving the closure of. Well, approving the barricades to be where Mister Moore suggested them to be. And the rental, wait, so we're taking out the tables and chairs because they're donated.
Yeah, tables and chairs are donated, ma'am.
Um and waiving the special events fees.
Motion made by Councilmember Wallace. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Going twice?
Mayor Pro Tem Council members, if uh there is no second, then the motion fails and you would ask for another motion. Mayor Pro Tem Council members, if, uh, there is no second, then the motion fails and you would ask for another motion.
One more time, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Weir. Are there any more questions to this motion?
Was there something else that, um, Yolanda said that we needed to add into the motion to consider? I thought she said.
The waiving of fees?
It was the waiving of the fees.
It was already there, okay. I have one last question. Was it at your, um, last year when you had the back to school haircut event? Was it at your location as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you kinda, is that where you kinda saw the, the need to block off streets and things like that? Cause you didn't.
Absolutely.
For safety?
Being right there on that corner, I've been there, uh, for four years now. And there's been a lot of traffic accidents right there at Parsons in Burnet. And I, I witnessed it personally. I've had to make calls to the police department to report the accident. And a lot of people do be flying, you know, on Burnet around in that corner. My first concern, like I said, was coming to y'all to get the approval from the city to block off the street for the safety of the kids. That's, that's the biggest concern before anything else, you know? And, and I'm expecting a lot of kids this year, so I was hoping I can get that support and the okay from y'all to block the street off to host the event.
Any more questions?
Okay, it's not a que, it, it is a question, but it doesn't have to be taken consideration at all. Um, especially if Mr. Franks doesn't agree. Um, but I guess because of the, I like the way how it's organized to where people would be able to come at a scheduled time. Cause, so you don't expect all sixty people to show up at the same time to get their haircuts cause it's organized like that and that's really good. Um, but I was also wondering if location was, um, if there was an opportunity to have, to meet the needs of the concerns of like having the safety for the children and then offering just like a, a space that would be helpful. And I know the, possibly the difference would be like the equipment being right there on hand already versus having the equipment to be moved versus, and still be in a safe space for everyone to be. Cause I, um, I think I remember, um, in the past, one year it was here, um, at City Hall or somewhere close to here or something like that. Um, if that was a different event.
The event that was held here was the ladies doing the hair braiding, but the haircuts were still at his facility.
Okay, and so, and I guess that, that kinda makes a difference because you still have to be careful for like walking traffic if there was like one or two. But, um, I guess that still kinda brings up a point of saying, of offering a space, um, to do that. So that's all I'm saying. Um, just to still be careful, uh, cause I agree. And maybe it's just me, but we've seen a lot of cars just kinda barricade through a lot of public events lately in the past year. And so I would hate for that to still happen or just even if it was by accident. But, um, that's all, just offering a second space. That's the, that was my concern if that, if that's in the possibility. If that could be something our connections of knowing places could offer that option for you.
Okay.
Can I just add, Mr. Franks? Um, did you ever think about having that same exact event? Um, but having it here, out here?
Um, when you say out here, you.
Like.
In the facility?
Whether it's in chambers, uh, you know, or out here in the lots, in our city lots here?
Uh, I would, I would have to look at the spacing and see what y'all have, uh, to provide for us. Being in the barber shop, it makes it so much easier, uh, for us because we need mirrors.
Okay.
And if we don't have mirrors, we're not gonna be putting out the best cuts. And we wanna, you know, especially with y'all supporting and backing us, we wanna put the best quality of work out there to represent who we are, the lab and the city of Maynor. And i- it's, it's gonna take a lot more of a setup to go outside of the barber shop because we need stations, we need mirrors, we need the proper lighting. And, and I know that's gonna be a hassle when we already have the setup there at the shop.
Okay.
But in the future, um, if this continue, if this grows like I'm, I'm thinking, we may need to move into a larger space. I'm not opposed to it, uh, but right now I kinda have my mindset on having the whole event there. I've had some flyers made, uh, like I said, hopefully y'all be able to prove it. But, uh, if it continues to grow like I think it will, I can contact other barber shops to come and help and just make this a city thing. Like I said, it's not about me, it's about providing for the kids and, and helping out. A barber shop has always been a pillar in the community. And by me having the platform, I do have, this is a way for me to reach out to the community and give back. You know, to everybody that's helped sustain me and my business within the past four years. Cause when I opened up, I opened up in the middle of COVID, it was May of twenty twenty. And so for me to be able to stand and flourish, uh, I just feel compelled to give back to the community. And this is one gesture that I like to use.
Great. Have you had conversations with the school district as well?
I have, I, like I said before, I talked to Ms. Myra Gail. And I'mma be collaborating with them and their, uh, drive as well. I'mma be giving gift certificates for free haircuts with the expiration date of about two weeks. So they can come in, you know, if they don't make the actual event, they can still come in separate, present the gift certificate and we'll honor them.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Any other questions to this motion? If they're done, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, five to one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franks.
Thank you all.
Okay, number fourteen has been pulled already. Number fifteen, consideration discussion and possible action on tax increment, reinvestment zone feasibility and consulting services agreement with TXP Inc., Manor Industrial TRC number two.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmembers. Um, what you have under consideration here is, um, tax re-investment zone feasibility and consulting agreement with TXP. And this is a, uh, project that we'd had under consideration, uh, economic development since early, well, since late last year. And, uh, we had researched, uh, consultant providers in the state of Texas and had only come up with two actually that are doing industrial tours. Um, there're quite a few of them doing it for, um, the residential side these days, but not that many of them doing it for the commercial side, it seems. And, uh, we went out to, uh, proposals, um, uh, these are well under the fifty thousand dollar, um, limit and, uh, the state requires. And we went out to proposals to two different firms, uh, TXP and Hawes Hill. And came back with, uh, those proposals and selected, uh, TXP as the low cost provider, uh, from those proposals. And, uh, we negotiated a contract, um, through our legal department with that provider. And, uh, have Travis James here with TXP in case y'all have questions for him. Um, but the plan is to, um, bring TXP on. Uh, if y'all will authorize the city manager to execute the service agreement with them in the amount of twenty six thousand five hundred. And, uh, bring them home to, uh, onboard to do the, the, uh, feasibility analysis and the financial analysis to try to put together an economic, uh, industrial tours for our area, probably the area out toward, um, the, uh, Kimbrough, Old Kimbrough Road area in the Manor Commercial Park, uh, area of town. And this will be to, um, capture the, uh, tax increment. And that's the difference between the existing, um, tax valuation and the increase of tax valuation from new development to try to, um, put together a pot of money basically to, um, develop new infrastructure for new projects. And so lack, lacking an economic development, um, corporation and some of those, uh, other methods that cities use to, um, to, to develop those types of, uh, uh, of funds to increase that kinda development. We, um, and a lot of cities do, do tours, investments. We're getting ready to do one downtown also to do the same type of thing. Um, but we wanna do one for industrial development to try to, uh, increase the revenues the city might have to, um, increase our infrastructures so that we can put together, uh, some industrial development and commercial development. Um, so that, we have a lot of small tracts, especially out in that area. And, and the property's been subdivided in smaller tracts. And so a large, uh, developer won't go out there and put together a whole bunch of smaller tracts cause of the property value is, is so increased and so high priced right now. Um, it's, it's kinda the opposite, uh, when they go out and, and buy a large piece of land, they can get it at a, at a lower price and then they go put together a pit or a putt or something like that and put in the utilities, sell bonds and then pay, pay out the infrastructure that way. They won't do that on these smaller pieces of land. So you need a, uh, uh, some type of incentive like a tour to be able to, you know, capture that incentive, put together a fund and then, uh, fund the infrastructure that way. This will be a start, not saying that it's gonna be the end all and the, and, and the way to structure all of it. But it'll be a, a starting way for us to get started. So, um, I'll let you talk to Travis if he's got anything to add, uh, meet, meet him. He might, uh, have some words of wisdom for you.
Mr. Jones first, can you state your name and title just for the record? We didn't pass it at the beginning.
I'm sorry?
Your name and your title for the record?
Scott Jones, Economic Development Director, sorry. I think, I think this thing was on, I couldn't hear myself.
Thank you, sir.
And this is Travis James with TXP.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about what's. Plan, thank you for turning that off. So it's good to be back here again. Uh, the scope of work, that was actually pretty good, the way you snuck in there and did that. Uh, the scope of work you see is divided into two phases. The first phase is the feasibility to see if it makes sense. If it doesn't make sense, we stop. If it does make sense, you have to tell me in writing and then we go on to phase two. Both those phases are included in that price that he indicated. But just so you know, it is a two phased approach. If it doesn't make sense, then we stop. So if I don't think it's the right tool or another tool makes more sense, I will tell you that. And so that's typically how I do these. I've worked on dozens, dozens of these. I'm working on probably five or six of these right now. Uh, so there's a standard process, we'll follow state law. I think the long and the short of it is if it makes sense, you all choose to proceed with the tours. We will try to get it put in place by the end of the year so you can lock in the value today. So the trick is you, you pick the year, so if you put the tours in place, we'd have the base year of twenty four and then we would talk about future growth. And I have a slide deck with graphics and the stuff will make a little bit more sense if you're, if you're not an expert on, on a tours. And that's something else I'd recommend that if you decide to go forward with this, I would like to come back and give you what I call my tours one oh one presentation just so you all have a lot more familiarity with the tool as we go through this process. Sometimes you have to hear it a couple of times. I'm helping, uh, a number of cities work on these, as I said, right now. I'm working with downtown Seguin on putting a tours in place down there as an example. We've done industrial tours, we've done mixed juice tours. They have different flavors, but the concept is the same. And this one, it would probably be used to pay for infrastructure to encourage that type of development. So one of the questions we'd have to figure out working with the city managers, how much revenue could we leave in that special account so that didn't hurt the city's ability to pay for services? But also have that sort of pot of money that we could use as an incentive to encourage growth in that area. So that's some of what we do, sort of forecast growth in the area, get with you, get with the city manager finance, see what makes sense, work through your legal department, uh, your outside legal counsel, pretty straightforward. Um, you have a tours board that oversees it. It's a public process like any other board, there's meeting minutes and notes and, you know, public records and all those kinds of things, kind of a standard, standard process. If you choose to do a tours, you do have to post for a public hearing, have a public hearing, or, you know, wait seven days, then you can approve it, then it comes back on second reading. So again, this is gonna feel like a very normal process that you follow for a lot of your city work. It'll just be focused on creating this tax increment reinvestment zone. So sometimes people use the terms, sorry, TIF and tours interchangeably, they're, means slightly different things. Um, the, the comptroller, uh, has a registries if you're ever interested. Great late night reading for all the cities and counties that have these, there is a registry. You do have to submit a small annual report, um, with the state of Texas with the comptroller's office. So they do keep track of who's doing these and how long they're lasting and those, and those kinds of things.
Thank you.
And I will tell you, we'll probably do this for multiple employment centers. So if we do this out in the area around Old Kimbrough Road and that Hans, um, track, we'll probably do it in other employment center areas, maybe up eleven hundred and maybe up nine seventy three. And wherever we have in the comprehensive plan, employment center plan, because it's a good tool for doing infrastructure, especially where we have to extend, uh, power, well, water and sewer lines and things like that. And, and, uh, it's very costly to do that from a city standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor Pro Tem Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve and authorize the city manager to execute the service agreement with TXP, uh, Inc. in the amount of twenty six thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion made by Councilmember Moreno, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wallace. Is there any questions to this motion? Any other questions? They're done, all in favor? All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number sixteen, consideration discussion and possible action on the Fifth Amendment to the Butler, East Highway two ninety and one three one zero zero North FM nine seven three, Manor Crossing Development Agreement.
Mayor Pro Tem, Council, my name is Michael Burrell, I'm with the City of Maynor as a planner. So this is the Fifth Amendment to the Manor Crossing Development Agreement. And it does three things in no particular order. The first thing is there is a change to lighting for the overall site. Street lighting was originally not allowed because it increased the total lumen count for each of the sites on the property. This amendment will allow them to illuminate the street and it will not be counted in their total illumination for the sites. And that amendment essentially will allow them one to one and a half foot candles worth of light trespass on the street. What that essentially means is the edge of the light to the light source. And foot candles is a very specific unit of measurement. But the other thing it does is that it allows for light trespass across properties up to three foot candles. Because before it was not allowed and it caused lighting issues that multiple tenants had issued with, with their permit. The next thing that this amendment does is that it allows for overnight concrete pours. Currently, we have restrictions on that where you can't do it between, I believe, what are the time restrictions for concrete pours? I know you're not supposed to do it, I believe between seven to seven, I could be wrong. Seven PM to seven AM. This allows for overnight concrete pours just because when you do it in the middle of the day, there's issues with how you pour the concrete, how it sets and how it cures. Whereas with overnight pours, especially since there's no real residential around it, it won't be disrupting anybody who lives in the area and it'll allow for more accurate pours that they can get done more efficiently. Then lastly, what this. Also, the workers pouring concrete in the heat is never a good thing. Uh, there's the issue of the actual concrete itself, when it cures, it gets very hot and they're just kinda sitting in that. And lastly, there is the allowance for turf to be in areas that are not a part of your landscaping. Currently, turf is not allowed to be substituted for landscaping. This amendment essentially allows you to place turf where you would have concrete, but it would not count towards your landscaping percentages. So for the apartment specifically, there was an issue they had where outside of their landscaping and some of their more like areas designed for congregation where people would go, say it's like a little seating area, they had turf, but since that's not allowed in the city, this amendment is to alleviate that so they can have that and make it a more enjoyable space.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Fifth Amendment to the Butler, East Highway two ninety and thirteen one hundred North FM nine seven three, Manor Crossing Development Agreement.
Motion made by Councilmember Moreno, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Alma Squad. Is there any other questions to the motion? Any other questions? There are no questions, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Number seventeen, consideration, discussion and possible action on a water service transfer agreement with Manville Water Supply Corporation for the proposed water service transfer for the Maynor Heights Project.
Mayor Pro Tem Council, someone's tall. Mayor Pro Tem Council Members, Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney, um, on this item. I apologize. This item is a continuation of the CCN that, transfer that had already taken place for Maynor Heights, that's the development. There are two additional tracts, um, known as the Nagel Tracts that equal about seventy-one acres. And uh, we already brought to you previously the deposit agreement, oh no, we did not, I apologize. The, there is, um, the developer will pay um for uh the transfer agreements and any of the um fees that are charged by your legal department or your engineer, engineering department on uh taking this through the PUC process. Manville has already approved it and has executed it and it's provided, the agreement is provided to you for your consideration and it's um in your agenda packet. If you have any questions or need additional information, let me know.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem and Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the water service transfer agreement with Manville Water Supply Corporation for the proposed water service transfer for the Maynor Heights Project.
Motion made by Councilmember Wallace, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Almasqua. Are there any other questions to the motion? Any questions? If not, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Number eighteen, consideration, discussion and possible action on a financial advisory contract. Mr. Moore?
Mayor Council, we have uh Ms. Chris Lane, she'll speak to, to the item that's before you.
For the record, my name is Chris Lane, I'm with SAMCO Capital Markets, the city's financial advisor. The contract that we currently have is an open ended contract, so each time we do a deal, we talk about the fee. And we've been using a flat fee that I have with some other clients. This, this is a more traditional contract, which is, which will make the compliance officer happier. And um, we've got a graduated fee schedule where the higher the bond issue, the lower the fee per bond. And um, that's what I'm presenting today. Our original contract also didn't contemplate PIDs, so each time we've, the PID fee is the same across the state. Um, all districts pretty much are paying two percent. Is that financial advisory fee, I won't say that there's probably handful that don't. Um, so I wanted to add that to the contract also. And Mr. Moore and I have been talking about this, each time we do a, a deal, we send an email and verify that. And it's all in, in all the documents that we do. So it's not that, nobody knows what the fee is, it's, when we do a deal, it's out there. But it's easier to have this going forward, so it's a set fee, which is more of a traditional contract. And it's right, um, right at the lower end of most of what my contracts are. I have one that's a little higher, it's an older contract. This is my newest contract and you were all in the central Texas area about almost exactly the same contract.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve of the financial advisory contract with SAMCO Capital Markets Inc. And authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Motion made by Councilmember Moreno, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Almasqua. Are there any questions to the motion? Any questions?
Is the rate at, is it correct, I'm reading two hundred and fifty dollars an hour?
Two hundred and fifty dollars an hour is when, if there's a project that's not a bond related project that we're, work is not gonna be paid uh for a bond issue or something, then we'll do that at two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. But there's not usually, I do a lot of work way before anything happens for a bond issue, as everybody can see. So I, and I don't charge individually for that, everything comes from the bond issue.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Council, uh, we're actually going to put nineteen on hold um until after executive session. Okay? We'll go on to number twenty, consideration, discussion and possible action on a first renewal of the inter local agreement for public health services between the city of Austin and the city of Maynor.
Uh, Mayor Council, the item before you is, is the inter local agreement that has been established with Austin Public Health. And then this is just a renewal for one year, um, for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the first renewal of an inter local agreement for the public health services between the city of Austin and the city of Maynor and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Motion made by Councilmember Moreno, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wallace, are there any questions to this motion? Any questions? None, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. The city council will now convene into executive session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one, Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in sections five five one point zero seven one and five five one point zero seven two, Texas Government Code and section one point five, Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct to consult with legal counsel and to deliberate the purchase of real property. Section five five one point zero seven one, Texas Government Code and section one point zero five, Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct to consult with legal counsel regarding Shadow Blade Putt. Section five five one point zero seven one, Texas Government Code and section one point zero five, Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct to consult with legal counsel regarding the Hibs Lane parcel. Sections five five one point zero seven one and five five one point zero eight seven, Texas Government Code and section one point zero five, Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct to consult with legal counsel regarding the Wannik Project. Section five five one point zero seven one and five five one point zero eight seven, Texas Government Code and section one point zero five, Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct to consult with legal counsel regarding the Leonard Project. Section five five one point zero seven one, Texas Government Code and section one point zero five, Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct to consult with legal counsel regarding pending litigation, specifically civil citation number J one, CB two four zero zero three zero eight three, Austin Bocelli, Robert Bataille, President versus City of Maynor pending in Justice Court Precinct one and section five five one point zero seven one, Texas Government Code and section one point zero five, Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct to consult with legal counsel regarding pending litigation, specifically civil citation number J one, CB two four zero zero three three six three, Robert Bataille versus City of Maynor pending in Justice Court Precinct one. The city council will now convene into open session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one, Texas Government Code and take action if any on items discussed during closed executive session. We are going to back to agenda item number nineteen. Consideration, discussion and possible action on a resolution authorizing the purchase and closing of four point two one nine four acres, more or less of real property located in Travis County, Texas, and approval of the real estate contract. Do I have a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve of resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three, authorizing the purchase and closing of four point two one ninety-four acres, more or less of real property located in Travis County, Texas. Approval of the real estate contract. No more than eighteen dollars a square foot and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and related documents for the purchase and closing of four point two one nine four acres.
Motion made by Councilmember Moreno, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wallace, do I have any questions to the motion? Any questions? If not, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We are now adjourned.